Good evening and welcome. I will reconvene the Yakima City Council meeting on September 2, 2025. We'll have roll call, please.
Berg?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Byers?
Present.
Deceo?
Here.
Glenn?
Here.
Herrera?
Here.
Roy?
Here.
Thank you. Will everyone please rise and join us to pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll have interpreter services.
Good evening. Jorge Villasenor, Language Connection. Si alguien necesita la ayuda en intérprete, tenemos los radios disponibles para hacerlo y aquí estoy para ayudarles. Gracias.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Next is public comment. There will be 35 minutes allowed for public comments this evening with each person having two and a half minutes in order to allow as many people as possible. Written communication and email messages are strongly encouraged. The state prohibits electionery and city facilities during public comment. Speakers cannot campaign for or against candidates or support or oppose any ballot measure in any upcoming election. So when I call your name, please come forward and identify yourself in the city in which you live as you speak to council. The first person is Ann Knapp.
Good afternoon and thank you for letting me comment today. I did put a little handout in front of each of you and gave one to the city clerk. My name is Ann Knapp. I live in Yakima. I support the trolley. I also support Yakima taxpayers who have funded the trolley for many years. Auto and directors and officers insurance alone was about $10,000 for the past two years. I don't know what the building insurance is or how much insurance taxpayers pay for everybody in the city who's not a city person. Do taxpayer dollars support private individuals? Who uses and who pays for the EV charger at the trolley powerhouse at Third Avenue in Pine? Insurance and electricity are fractions of trolley costs. They add up over the years. We also have conflicting info on what the trolley folks want taxpayers to fund. The Washington Trust for Stork Preservation believes the overhead wire system is in place as this is what provides the trolleys with electricity and enables them to operate. But the recent Sixth Avenue study estimated at least nine million for the trolley, including new overhead electric lines. If the lines are in place, I don't see them and I don't think taxpayers should pay for new ones. Taxpayers face a $9 million deficit. We've put off building sidewalks for school kids for years. Does the trolley trump sidewalks? The trolley folks must provide accurate information to all parties and shoulder all costs. One step towards accountability is for them to obtain a franchise from the city to operate the trolley in the city right of way. A franchise assumes via contract between the city and a utility. I'm sure they can figure it out, just that they can figure out if the overhead lines are in place or not. I urge you to let the trolley stand on its own tracks and applaud your decisions to spend scarce taxpayer resources wisely. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Knapp. Next is Mary Place.
Hi, my name is Mary Place and I live in the city of Yakima. Before you consider any option or any action on the Yakima trolleys, I hope you might consider another possible action. When the Interstate Commerce Commission abandoned the trolley line right away in 1985 after a lawsuit by Congdens that said they had to take the track out, they abandoned about 20 miles of track, including the track into Seala and all the way out to Congdens. After that, much of the land around Third Avenue was sold, I think it was about 11 acres, to Comprehensive Mental Health and that's where their facilities are today. If any of you, I remember going down there to Davis and all of a sudden it was not railroad line anymore. It was Comprehensive Mental Health. The trolley people, I mean the railroad people then donated the trolley barn and about little over an acre to the city of Yakima for a railroad museum. Since this land was donated to the city, what would be the possibility of the city donating the barn and that land to the trolley people now? It wouldn't be a gift of public funds because it was a donation. And since it was a donation, I think we should be able to do that. But I'm not a lawyer and I'm sure it will take some homework to get that figured out. That way it would give the trolley people the freedom and the authority to manage their line the way they saw fit. It would also relieve the taxpayers of having to pay for the trolley. Additionally, the trolley group right now has an office on 12th Avenue and they could actually move their office into the trolley barn, which was not allowed before because it was city property. That would save them some resources. The two current trolleys that they have were purchased from Portugal in about 1985. And I understand that the city owns one and the county owns the other. Private and public funds were used to purchase and rehab the trolleys. I think the city could lease back their trolley to the planning, to the group until that debt was paid and then they would own it free and clear. I know some investigation will need to be done, but it seems this might be a good solution for the trolley group and for the city of Yakima and in a tight budget year for the city taxpayer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Place. Those are the only ones I have except for one online. Mr. Beeler, we do have one person online, is that correct?
Yes, Mayor Byers, we have Greg Johnson, who is joining via Zoom. He has now been promoted to a panelist and should be able to turn on his microphone and camera.
Hi there, are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor and council members, and thank you for the opportunity as always to speak. I'm Greg Johnson with Yakima Light Trolleys. I just wanted to quickly address one comment that was made at the last meeting. At your last meeting, there was some speculation that it could cost $20 million to restore the tracks in Seala Gap. And that number would rest on two unrealistic assumptions, both of which are not correct. First, it's assuming that the rate to rebuild exposed track and Seala Gap is the same as the rate that it would cost to rebuild the track, which is embedded in Sixth Avenue. And that's certainly not the case. It's much cheaper. And second, it assumes that the Seala line needs to be fully reconstructed, which it does not. While we wait for the bridge repairs to be completed so that we can resume the service in Seala, we've continued to monitor and maintain the line out there. And we recently had the line inspected by a professional engineer who has credentials in railroad engineering. And his conclusion was very straightforward that there is one segment of rail that needs to be repaired in Seala Gap and some brush that needs to be cleared. And his conclusion was that both of those can be completed by the volunteers of the trolley organization. And I'll quote, his report states that no costly fatal flaw preventing return to service was encountered. So you guys will receive a copy of this report. And I think it's really important to protect the credibility of the discussion in these chambers and make sure that things are grounded in fact rather than speculation. So I'd encourage you guys to come to us if you'd like to have a chat. We're always happy to discuss things. Our doors open and we're more than willing to engage in constructive conversations with council. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Beeler, is there anyone else? And on Zoom, who was just just the council?
No, Mayor Byers, there is not.
Thank you. Then I will close the public comment for this evening. And we will move into the open discussion for the good of the order. The first is the Yakima United Football Club proclamation. Is there Hector Vega here, please?
Got to make a motion first.
Okay. Somebody want to make a motion? Long is on his way up.
I would move to approve the Yakima United proclamation and request that it be read and presented. Second.
So we have motion by Deputy Mayor Brown and a second by Councilman Herrera that we read and approve and then read out loud the proclamation for this group. Thank you very much. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you. And Council, Deputy Mayor Brown will read the proclamation.
All right. Whereas Yakima United FC, known fondly as the Hoppers, has achieved an extraordinary feat in local sports by winning its second consecutive Evergreen Premier League of Washington championship in 2025, securing a 1-0 victory over Washington East Surf SC thanks to a decisive 52nd minute strike by Johnny Ramirez. And whereas the team's success was a result of strategic teamwork, defensive resilience, especially from goalkeeper Luis, I don't know how to say that.
Rieta?
Okay. Who delivered a clean sheet and precise execution under pressure. And whereas this back-to-back championship not only adds the coveted Ostraski Cup to Yakima United's trophy case, but also elevates the club's standing in league history as one of the most successful teams. And whereas the dedication and unity demonstrated by the players, coaches, and supporters of Yakima United embody the spirit of preservation, or perseverance, sorry, pride and shared accomplishment that define our community. Now therefore, I, Matt Brown, the Deputy Mayor of the city of Yakima, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, September 2, as Yakima United Day in the city of Yakima and encourage the community to celebrate by wearing the team's colors, displaying banners, and joining in recognizing the Hoppers enduring excellence. Thank you.
So as you can see, I'm not Hector Vega, I'm Tony Sandoval. I'm subbing for him right now. He had to be called away to work in Mexico with his boss. So I'll start this off and I would like to thank Deputy Mayor Brown for putting this forward. As Parker mentioned, that is huge amongst our community. It's not every day you win a championship. So these guys are the best of the best this year. So next year, they got to do it all over again. So as people know, the sports builds character. Mr. Berg over here understands that. Picture for the Gonzaga Bulldogs that beat my beloved Cougs probably more than once.
You'd be surprised.
So he knows what that's all about. It's the ultimate high playing sports. I mean, I've done a lot of things, you've done a lot of things. And trust me, if I could do it again, I'd do sports every time. So with that, I'll hand it off to another legendary coach, Mr. Cole.
Thank you, sir. Hi. It's a privilege to be able to be here and to speak on behalf of the Yakima United. And we only have a few people here, but it represents about, what, 30 some players? Something like that? Yeah? And it's quite a family. Let me read to you what Hector wanted to share. Yakima United is one of the original eight EPL Evergreen Premier League teams to participate in the inaugural 2014 season. Yakima United has played every season since 2014. It hosted the first EPL game in 2014. And President Peter Ostrowski, who the EPL trophy is named after, was in attendance and presented the Yakima United team with an original EPL plaque. Yakima United made it to the EPL final championship game for the third consecutive year this year. The Yakima United family is, it's a family affair led by Hector Vega and most recently coached by his son Joshua. Yakima United FC players are very diverse, but united. We always try to drive that home. We're united no matter what. Current 2025 roster players are playing for 12 different colleges this year and universities. But Call Yakima Valley their home. CBC, Walla Walla, Evergreen, Peninsula, SFCC? What's that? Spokane? Okay. Washington State University, Western Gonzaga, SPU, St. Martin's, Eastern Oregon University, and Michigan. Yeah, all over the place. Yakima United captain Jose Marquez? There you are. Was named the 2024 WSA Male Player of the Year. Luis Vireta, our goalie, is a pro goalkeeper with Tacoma Stars. Actually, Misael plays with them too. With Tacoma Stars. Yakima United corporate sponsor, partner, Zerkel Fruit, has supported Yakima United since their inaugural season in 2014. And Zerkel Fruit logo is proudly displayed on Yakima United's jersey, where it has remained for 12 seasons. So that's quite a commitment. We're very appreciative. With the support of Zerkel Fruit, Yakima United has been able to host free kids clinics in our community every year, along with our players and staff participating in other community events. Yakima United, as was mentioned, nickname is the Hoppers. Is contributed to the Yakima Valley as a global leader in the hop production, accounting for 75% of the nation's hops. And Yakima United has their own beer label, thanks to Single Hill Brewery in Yakima, which we are also very appreciative. And on my part, I've actually coached in the Yakima Valley. Well, I think I started somewhere in the later 80s. And I actually coached Luis a little bit when he was at Davis. And feel, and also I retired from Davis a few years ago, but have been working out at Sozo with the little guys. And so what these guys do in the valley and just the impact they have on the youth, it's a privilege and we take it seriously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to come around and shake our hands, please?
Unless you want to say more.
If you want to, if you want to speak, please.
Then we'll do it.
Sorry. So I'm Jose Marquez. I'm the captain of Yakima United. I have been for, I want to say the past three to four years. Co-captain actually, because we have Luis Vireta here, who I share duties and responsibilities with. First off, I want to thank you all for recognizing us and our accomplishments over the past couple of years, as well as thank Hector Vega and the whole Yakima United organization for giving us the platform and ability to continue putting on Yakima Valley's soccer power on display. Originally, I started playing because I was going to leave to college and I really needed somewhere to stay in shape and play competitively. And as soccer, collegiate soccer kind of winded down for me, I didn't know what was going to fill that void. And so the ability to play for Yakima United and keep competing has filled that void. Soccer, we were talking before coming into the room and it's like a drug for us. We go a day or two without it and it's just, we don't know what to do with ourselves after a couple of days. So having Yakima United really gives us the opportunity to fill that void. And it gives us a platform to continue playing. I'm sure if it wasn't for Yakima United, I wouldn't have the coaching position that I have at Sunnyside High School. Both of these guys who are standing behind me as professional players have that opportunity to play thanks to Yakima United. And yeah, so thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. 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 If he wants to take a picture, have you all stand up here in front of the city council so you can see where you were at. Come stand up here in front of us and you take a picture of that from that direction.
Scoot in. Scoot in.
Okay. Guys got to get down a little bit.
You guys are so tall.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Next on the agenda, I'm sorry, is item 5B, which is a recognition of Martin Cueva Ramirez for 20 years of service. And our chief oil is going to present the award.
Chief. He's back. Welcome back.
Welcome back, chief.
Appreciate it. Welcome and thank you for the opportunity to recognize Martine's outstanding work. He's one of the professional staff. When we think of the police department, we think of the police officers. But there's a whole group of people that work every day to keep us up and running. And Martine, for years, was our only maintenance person. And to that, it includes the outside, interior, everything, fixing everything that comes along. So he's able to fix about anything that comes along with us, saving us money, which I know you'll be appreciative of. But Martine's always, he's always available, he's always smiling, he's always hard at work. But some of the things that we could think of during, that I thought of is during COVID, when everybody was at home and everybody's hiding, Martine was coming in early, cleaning all of our work areas, keeping us up and running, putting himself obviously at risk higher than some of the other people that were there. Martine's been recognized as employee of the, professional staff employee of the year at our police department for the outstanding work that he does. We finally were able to budget a second person to help him, but I still see Martine working his butt off every day. So, but the biggest thing I would like to say too is thank his family who's here to join him and help be a part of the celebration. And to put it, people that put in 20, 30 years anywhere anymore is remarkable. And we were just talking, he's only got about 25 to go. We're not going to make his next 20 year, but he promises he'll be here. So, but I just want to say thank you to all the hard work he does and thank his family because they're the ones that suffer when he gets up at 3:00 in the morning to come in and start shoveling snow so that it's open and we're ready. And I know he supports the rest of the building, not just the police department. So thank you again, Martine, and we appreciate the hard work that you do. Thank you. Thank you very much. And this is the plaque that come on behalf of the organization and then on behalf of the city. Thanks again.
Martine, would you like to say a few words?
I just.
Thank you.
Thank you, Martine.
Thank you.
He's getting all his handshake.
What is that, Leo?
Flowers. It's kind of a secret admirer.
All right, thank you again. We move on to item 5C, which is the council nominating committee recommendations regarding appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. And Councilman Berg is going to report?
I got it, yeah. So we met on Tuesday, the 26th of August. And we only had one appointment, one applicant for the Bike and Ped Committee. And Mr. Glenn moved and I seconded to recommend Tyler Adams to the Bicycle and Ped Advisory Committee. And that was a unanimous decision. And then we were made aware before we left that the nominating, we were notified of vacancy on the planning commission and informed and informed that several applicants were on file from previous opening. So the nominating committee will review those and consider applicants at a future date. And then we adjourned at 4:45.
Thank you.
Pretty easy.
Any questions, council?
I would move to adopt the council nominating committee recommendations.
Second.
So we have a motion by Councilman Deceo and a second by Deputy Mayor Brown to accept the recommendations of the nominating committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you, council. Next is item 5D, which is our arboretum presentation on the trip to Yakima Sister City in Japan.
Hello, everyone. I'm Jessica Black. This is Monae Bessenti. We're both at Heritage University. I'm an environmental science professor and the director for the Center for Indigenous Health, Culture, and Environment.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
And Monae is the director for First Nations Mesa. And we are both members of the Yakima Area Arboretum. We serve on their board. And it was in both capacities, heritage and arboretum, that we went to Japan and specifically to Itanagi, which is Yakima's sister city. And so this is our presentation to show you all about it.
So when we arrived to Itanagi, we were welcomed by two individuals from City Hall. They're sitting in the middle of that far left image of this, they call us amphibious boat or amphibious car, which is basically a tour they took this on. And I will say that they were very meticulous with the tour of the agenda of the day. They took great care and detail into what we did from the morning they picked us up to when they dropped us off back at our hotel. So we were very much appreciative of that attention to detail. So this is one of the first activities that we did. We got to visit Nishimaya Dam, a lake tour. And pretty much every activity also resulted in a snack or food.
Did you bring some back?
It melted.
We did, actually, but I'm not sure where, maybe I did make it to you guys.
The cookies were delicious.
Great. And so they took us for soft serve with honey on top afterwards. It was a hot day. We needed to cool off. And then that transitions straight into lunch.
I'm getting hungry.
I know.
A very arduous day. It was very difficult. And this was, it was fantastic. It was an amazing restaurant. And then? Oh, yeah. And then we went to the Sugaro Haniputa Village. They were undergoing a festival of, it was kind of like lantern parades, but on a giant scale. So you think of the tiny lanterns that they release into the atmosphere. These are giant ones that they pull along on the street level. So they were just ready to celebrate this festival. This museum was dedicated to the history of the festival and the different types of lanterns that were all handmade, hand painted. And so this was the museum they took us to. It was really important for them to share the cultural highlights of the region as well. And this shows, there's a figure here that shows in old times, this is what they would do. They would have a couple hundred people pulling these floats, the lanterns through the streets. And they still do it today, maybe now with quite as many people. I think they have a mounted more iconic, but it was beautiful. And they have, of course, a beautiful garden. We are from the arboretum, of course. So it was a beautiful Japanese garden. And like everywhere else, the museum also had a specialty cookie shop and so we ate them.
You ate them.
It would have been rude.
You suffered for it.
And then after that lunch and the tour at the museum, we were taken to Itanagi's Ringo Works, is what this facility is called. It's all catered and centered around apples, the history of apples, why and how they harvested and grown apples. The bottom display on the right side, they have about over 130 varieties on display, which I believe they all grow there. There's 130 varieties of apples currently growing at Ringo Works, is what it's called. The building on the left, that's where their museum is located. The image on the top right, that is one of their early, early models of pesticides or fertilizers being applied to the crops. So that's kind of one of their, I guess, artifacts they have in their museum. And one of the things that we really wanted to share with you in particular is that they really celebrate apples. They're the largest producer of apples in Japan, which is why they're our sister city. So they have apple festivals and they also celebrate every part of the apple. And here, there's the four different things that they have. One, they use parts of the apple, an apple tree, apple bark, to dye yarn, so different wools, and in many different colors. They also use the bark to do weavings for baskets and other mats and beautiful. and other mats, and beautiful, they use, they create the charcoal, and someone's activated charcoal as well, so it's another one, and then they also create pottery, so the color of the pottery, as well as the texture of the pottery, is all part of apples, apple trees. And like we said, this Ringo Works is a huge campus, you can stay on this campus, you can visit it, they also have a farmer's market where local produce, like apples, apple juice, apple sauce, dried apple chips, they're all on sale, they're all available for purchase, but they also have classes catered towards this, so they embed this mission and vision, but they also execute it in workshops, so here is a demonstration of one of the ladies showing us the types of barks that they use to dye the fabrics, there's examples of weaving materials and items that they've had in their classes, in the middle image, that is some of the clay pottery that they've had with the community public, anyone's welcome to sign up and have these classes. And they ended with a snack, fresh pressed apple juice and cookies, which you guys were able to try, some of you were able to try.
Before I ate the rest.
I did eat some, thank you. You saved me some.
And one of the things that we requested especially, one of our partners is actually, is WSU and their Eric Facilini Prosser, and so we really wanted to see, and we, we work with Project AI and Ag, and we wanted to see how they did it, because of course it's very different, so we requested that we go see apple orchards, and this is one of the city council members who's been here in their visits, and he gave us a tour showing us the different apples and different styles. They take fruit seriously, you notice that some of these are individually covered to protect the- And this particular tree, it's over seventy years old and still producing, and you notice there's metal or wooden stakes to hold up, and they, it's like art, it's like large-scale bonsai, they train each and every branch from the entire orchard, so it has maximum sun coverage, but at a very specific height, so for picking, it's one of the most incredible things, but on the bottom left, it's actually the new style where they do it more upright, they, I think, even for them, it's getting a little too over-intensive, the older style, but these trees, I mean, very productive and still over seven years old, so it's a really interesting comparison and contrast to what we're doing here, mechanization, and of course, there's volcanoes in Japan. Yes, and this is towards the evening, we were welcomed for a dinner, this is where we got to meet the officials, also the mayor of Itainagi, so there's Jessica and I, as well as, we also had a friend of ours also there from Panama, he's on the, kind of second to the right from the image, I'm trying to orientate myself, and it was really wonderful to have that reception, I've never been a part of a very prestigious formal Japanese dinner, so that's very much how it was, take off your shoes when you walk into the mat, and it was, it was very wonderful, everyone greeted us kindly, warmly, and they all gave us their positions and what they do in their town. And the seating chart was, again, it was formally printed out and shown to us, we had our positions and where we were, and this is us, and while we were here, we also did a gift exchange, thank you so much to the council for providing some of those gifts, it was, again, it was a very formal thing, we had them exactly right, and they were very happy with that. And then, I also wanted to add, we had a welcome by the mayor of Itainagi, and I had this translated into English by our translator, and this is what he said to both of us when we arrived, "Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, today we have a small welcome party from the visitors of the Yakima City Arboretum, I would like to send a hearty welcome to all of you who have come all the way from the US to visit Itainagi Town. Itainagi and Yakima became sister cities in nineteen seventy-two because of the apple. We have been engaged in various exchange activities such as sending students from Itainagi Junior High School to Yakima City. Last year, I visited Yakima to celebrate the fiftieth anniversary of our sister city relationship. During my visit, I had the opportunity to visit the Yakima Arboretum, the cherry trees sent from Itainagi Town have grown to a large size, and I was deeply impressed by the long history of our relationship with Yakima. I strongly hope that we will continue to cherish this relationship and further strengthen our sister city ties. I hope that all of you will have a pleasant time tonight, and I look forward to seeing you all again, thank you." They did mention a few times that they hadn't had a visit from, from Yakima in pretty much the history of our sister city, and they were thrilled, and probably why they rolled out the red, very tasty carpet for us, but they, they wanted us to strongly express how much they would love it if representatives were able to come and visit, and we also would strongly encourage it in that they're a very small town, but they're quite entrepreneurial. Their question of, why do you not have an apple festival, I resonated with me at least, something that's family-friendly, and how they've, like they've created a community center that's classes, all of these things, it's based around the apples, it's really neat and fun and tourism, right? Anyway, and again, from the arboretum's perspective, it was, it's a beautiful partnership, and we, again, will encourage you to consider visiting Itainagi, our sister, our sister city, they will welcome you with open arms and a lot of snacks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for representing Yakima so well. Oh, sure, yeah.
Come around, we'll shake your hands.
Shaking a lot of hands. You're shaking a lot of hands.
Thank you.
It's a new experience.
Thank you.
I gotta say it after, I'll sit there. Your what? Yeah.
Okay, we will move on, we are now at, oh, there are no council reports this evening, so we'll go right into our consent agenda. Items are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. A council member may request to remove an item from the consent agenda, and if approved, it will be placed on the regular agenda for discussion and consideration. Does any one on council have any items they wish to remove from the consent agenda? Mr. Herrera?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I request to remove item C.
All right, any other requests by council? Hearing that, and then Clerk, would you read the agenda, please?
Item seven A is approval of minutes from the August nineteen twenty twenty-five city council regular meeting. Item B is project completion and contract acceptance with TTC Construction, Inc. for wastewater treatment plant, primary digester pipe replacement project WF two eight zero five. Item D is a resolution authorizing an agreement with Gray and Osborne, Inc. for the East Knob Hill Boulevard and Fair Avenue Intersection Improvement Projects two one four three and two seven eight nine. Item E is a resolution authorizing a contract extension with Air Planners LLC for air service development and consulting services for the Yakima Air Terminal McAllister Field. Item F is a resolution authorizing a contract extension with Cornell Oil, Inc. for the purchase of bulk fuels and delivery of gasoline, diesel fuels, and related products. Item G is a resolution authorizing an agreement with the Washington State Department of Transportation to fund the Yakima Ellensburg commuter. Item H is a resolution adopting Yakima Transit's Development Plan for twenty twenty-five through twenty thirty and annual report for twenty twenty-four. Item I is a resolution authorizing settlement of workers' compensation claims filed by claimant Sam Masters. Item J is a resolution authorizing settlement of workers' compensation claims filed by claimant David Cortez.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda.
I second.
So we have a motion by Deputy Mayor Brown and a second by Councilman D'Clio to present the, to approve the consent agenda as read. All of those in favor, we have resolutions, we'll take a roll call vote, please. Berg?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Byers? Yes. D'Clio?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Herrera?
Yes.
Roy? Yes. All right, motion passes seven zero, and resolutions are adopted, thank you, council. We're going back to item C, and would you like to address this, Mr. Herrera?
Yeah, so I could either move the item C or D, because it's the same project, but it's a big project in my district, the intersection of Fair Avenue, East Knob Hill, so real fast, Mr. President, can you, I know it says right here, but how is this project funded, just to, for the audience to know?
So this actually is a intersection improvement to add left-turn lanes on Knob Hill, that right now there aren't any, and back in two thousand eleven or two thousand twelve, this project actually got started with a grant from, an STBG, an STBG grant from YVCOG, required a thirteen-and-a-half percent match, and so that's what did the design and the right-of-way, and then there was leftover money, so that kind of rolls into the construction phase, and then two years ago, I think it was, YVCOG did another call for projects, and we were awarded another million dollars, so it's all fed, and then the thirteen-and-a-half percent match comes from, there's a little bit of TBD on there because it's a sidewalk project that's on the TBD list, and then our stormwater funds are able to provide match for that, so actually, the only general fund contribution to this project currently is what we already spent.
All right, and then any idea on a tentative schedule, because I know it's a huge intersection on just a few years.
Well, it took a little longer to get here than, it took, what, twelve years to get here than I thought, so what's another year, right?
Not twelve years.
So, no, not twelve years, so basically, we might, we'll get some work started this year, not going to start till after the fair, and then most of the work will be next year. We'll, we'll see how much they get done this, this winter, but, you know, we start with all the underground, so there's all that water work that needs to take place.
Awesome, thank you.
Any other discussion, council? All right, we need a motion.
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, I approve, move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. Would you read the resolution, please, Clerk?
This is a resolution authorizing an agreement with Inner West Construction, Inc. for the East Knob Hill Boulevard and Fair Avenue Intersection Improvement Project two one four three and two seven eight nine.
Thank you, so the motion was made by Councilman Herrera, second by Councilman Berg, to approve the resolution, we'll take a roll call vote, please. Brown?
Yes.
Byers? Yes. D'Clio?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Herrera?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Berg?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero, and the resolution is adopted, thank you, council. All right, now we move on to, we have no public hearings this evening, we'll go to department items, and there is a resolution to repeal Community Crosswalks, Bill Preston, our community development director, will-
Good evening again, council, so on July fifteenth, you instructed me to come back with a resolution repealing the community crosswalk policy, and before you is that policy, or that repeal.
I move to approve the resolution, adopt the resolution, excuse me?
I second it. So we have a motion by Councilman Berg and a second by Councilman Roy to adopt the resolution, and Clerk, would you read the resolution in full, please?
This is a resolution repealing resolution number R dash two zero two one dash zero five eight, the community crosswalks policy.
Thank you, I will take a roll call vote, please. Byers? Yes. D'Clio?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Herrera?
No.
Roy? Yes. Berg?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
All right, motion passes six, six to one, and the resolution is adopted, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Preston. Move on to, and goodbye. Next is item nine B, what's a resolution authorizing an agreement with Central Washington Fair Association for Police Services, and Lieutenant Tori Adams is here, I'm sorry, Captain Tragedies is here, thank you, you guys switched on me.
So we've received a twenty-two thousand five hundred dollar grant from Central Washington Fair to cover the costs of policing during fair week this year, and so the resolution approves that.
Okay.
Awesome, yeah.
Is that enough to pay the bill?
Well, we did a cost analysis of last year's, and last year's was a little bit less, and we fell right in the ballpark of staffing, and we're going to change our staffing metrics a little bit this year to ensure we stay close to the budget and make sure that we still have officers on the streets, so this will pay a lot of overtime to bring people in on their days off instead of pulling officers off of the street, and so then should make policing a little better for both the patrol officers and the fair staff.
If we happen to go over, can we bill the fair association, or how would that work?
It's a twenty-two thousand five hundred dollar lump sum, we use it however, however we choose, in years past, we've sent them a reimbursement of costs up to a certain amount, which is what we had done in previous years, this year, they've afforded us just a lump sum to use how we choose.
Okay. Do, is it just you guys work in the fair, do the sheriffs help out at all?
We're going to utilize some technology that's a group in the valley that's working on the real-time crime center, and so we will have some staff banning the cameras or staffing the cameras, that'll be set up at the fair, but the policing services will be done by Yakima Police Department.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, would you read the resolution, please?
This is a resolution authorizing an agreement with Central Washington Fair Association to staff police officers at the fairgrounds during the Central Washington State Fair.
I'd move to approve the resolution.
I second.
So we have a motion by Deputy Mayor Brown and a second by Councilman D'Clio to approve the resolution as read, we'll take a roll call vote, please. D'Clio?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Herrera?
Yes.
Roy? Yes. Berg?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Byers? Yes. Motion passes seven zero, resolution is adopted, thank you, council. Do we have a city manager update?
I could say something very quick.
Okay.
Sure, so you know, since I arrived, I've worked hard on being transparent and working on communication with the community, and this last week, we launched a podcast, and I don't know that it's out and available right this minute, I think it's kind of getting worked out, but it will be released soon, and so I ended up being their inaugural person, it was lots of fun, and I hope you all join us in this new way to reach the community, and it's not the end, we're looking at other ways where people get their information, and if, if there's a place out there that makes sense for the city, that's what we want to do.
As long as it doesn't involve sand surfing.
Yeah, no. Yeah, I, I hurt my knee, and so that's what the crutches are for, but hopefully, I will get a surgery and be walking again soon.
Thank you.
Go on the podcast, don't hurt your knees.
It didn't start out the best way.
Is there any other business before the council this evening?
I have one.
Okay.
Going off what you just said, Mrs. Baker, the transparency, I would like to move to have staff present at a future study session the feasibility of creating a government transparency portal.
A second.
So we have-
Can you, can you explain what that means?
Basically, one of our goals, when was it, the retreat, a year and a half ago, was to be more transparent with the citizens, so I think full transparency not only holds everyone accountable, but the people can be more engaged with us, and so I would, I would just like to see if that's possible, you know, what it entails, I've kind of done some homework on it, I know Seattle does it, a few other cities around the state, so I think it's a good idea, I'd like to explore, you know, can we do it, what does it look like, we'd have to get IT involved.
Is it, is it financial information, or is it other?
I was thinking like, I don't know if this is doable, but anything that could be requested through a public record, we could all have it in one place, it would help staff time, maybe save costs, stuff like that.
It's called a portal, a transparency?
Transparency portal.
Thank you.
And Seattle would be a good model to look at.
I would start there, I don't know what theirs entails exactly, I didn't spend like six hours researching it, but Seattle does it, you know, I would like to explore that option.
So we have, so we had a motion, is that correct? A motion by Councilman Berg and a second by Deputy Mayor Brown to bring into a future discussion, the discussion about creating a government transparency portal. All of those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Do we have any other business, or council, this evening?
I'd like to mention one thing, I was at, out when the school buses were running around the other day, and we had a situation where an individual who was illegally parked where he shouldn't have been with an RV, obviously a homeless man, got out of that vehicle, was running around naked and really creating a threat for the people, the kids that were trying to get on the school bus, and I talked to Union Gospel Mission because the- And I talked to Union Gospel Mission because the vehicle was on their property. And I also sent an email to one of the police officers and asked if something could be done about it. I went by this evening, and it was gone, so I was very grateful for that. But that really illustrates to me that, you know, homeless people are unfortunately a very real threat to little children, and, and I, I'd like to see us do a better job of keeping them away from the kids, you know? It's, it's a very tough thing when you got little kids that are going to get on the school bus, and they have to go past homeless people who don't have hardly any inhibitions